Everyone please join me in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum as everybody had a chance to look at this. I need to make two amendments to it. Uh, one is the second reading of ordinance number eight, eight, seven. It'll be under planning and zoning. And then under the Saratoga Airport advisory board, we have a final payment. Wyoming law and timber in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars. Those two amendments to the agenda, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with those two amendments that have been made to it.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, has everybody had a chance to go through the minutes from the August fifth meeting? So, take a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the August fifth meeting.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the bills. We had deposits in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. Counts payable in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-two two-hundred-and-twenty-seven point fifty-nine. Transmittals in the amount of forty-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-three and seventy-eight cents. Payroll in the amount of fifty thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to pay the bills and approve the transaction?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. The first one we have.
We have the party on the plat. It'll be Friday, September fifth. Thursday, five-thirty. It's our forty dollars. And then to sponsor a table of eight is five hundred.
Uh, the question is, had I brought it to the council, do we want to sponsor a table?
I don't see anything wrong with it.
Other discussion on it?
I'd make a motion to sponsor a table for eight.
Motion on the table was, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of town sponsoring a table with a party on the plat? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Saying my name is from Bigfoot ninety-nine. Good morning. It is almost back to school time and Bigfoot ninety-nine will be sending our back-to-school safety message out here. By ten by eight of you sponsor of this important message. Thank you for being a valued client. That is gonna be ninety-nine dollars. It's gonna run two times each day on both stations from August twenty-fifth to August thirty-first. And the message will be with school back in session. It's more important than ever to stay alert and avoid distracted driving. All bicycles on speed limits and follow your school's drop-off. See yours. Take eye contact. Children who are crossing the street, never pass a bus that is loading or unloading children. Your ten feet around a school bus is the most dangerous for children. Stop far enough back to allow them safely enter and exit the bus. In Wyoming, our kids matter. Sponsored by.
Question? Hmm, Chair would entertain a motion to go ahead and purchase this ad for ninety-nine what?
Ninety-nine dollars.
Ninety-nine dollars for him from the twenty-fifth to the thirty-first of September.
I'd make the motion to sponsor this app.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Is there any other correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to items from the public. And the first one I'll use Sophia Borg with the Fall Festival.
Sophia could not be here tonight, so she asked me if I go ahead and present it. It's the Fall Festival is gonna be on October eleventh. Uh, from ten AM to four PM. She's gonna be using the town parking lot like they did for the last few years. Pretty much the same thing.
She requests the street been blocked off or anything?
She has not requested street. Oh, right here. Yes, because she didn't, uh, street closure application. On close Spring Street, she said.
Which would be just up to the city hall, correct?
Yeah, because the police was left open.
And the fire.
Chief Moore, do you have any questions or discussion on this?
I do not. We didn't have the issues last time the event was held, so. Right? Last time she done her lot behind girl's office, correct?
The year before she did that last year was just in the parking lot.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be asking you issue all.
Fire chiefs. Done? Does anyone from the council have any questions? I have a motion to approve this special event from Sophia Borg in the October eleventh.
I'll make a motion to approve it for the Fall Festival on October eleventh.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, the next one is Rand.
So, um, this year will be our second annual, um, Walk Ten Alzheimer's. We're looking at Veterans Island on, um, Saturday, September twentieth. Um, approximately eight AM till about noon-ish. Um, I am gonna ask, um, the chief here for some, um, support on the street on the walk. We're gonna go from Veterans Island over the bridges to the hot pool of Walnut Street to River, and then down back to Bridge. Over the bridge, back to Veterans Island will be, um, the walk path. Um, we've got approximately thirty people is what I'm assuming. Um, we'll have a sunrise sanitation will help with the garbage. We'll clean everything up, so asking for that. And then I'm also asking if the council would not pave Tyler Pickett Park at my walk again this year because that was really hard to carry all that stuff over the river. If possible, please. Thank you, thank you.
Um, yeah. Uh, does the council have any questions?
No.
You have any issues, chief?
No, we discussed this. We have the issues.
Yes. Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this Alzheimer's law? Uh, September twentieth?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Alzheimer's law.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, get that on the calendar.
Thank you.
And we won't be paving.
Thank you so much. That was horrible.
Okay, next we have Kathy Beck with the special events permit, picking on the plat.
Keep that fan going while you're up there.
Um, oh, picking on the plat? Same day as Sophia's thing. But, um, I've talked to her and I don't know that there's gonna be any conflict. And in fact, I think that it's gonna be a great opportunity for us to piggyback off of one another because there'll be stuff going on here. And then our event is on the north side of the community center on that grassy area. That's where we set up our musicians. Um, we had a really great turnout in the spring, so we decided to do another one this fall. Uh, food trucks, road closure from second to third on those intersections on spring. And if we can, it would be great if we could get cones put up by Public Works or the police department. If we can just get those, it's nice to have it very clearly marked that people can't drive there because that's where we set up our vendors. And kids are riding bicycles and walking and things like that. Um.
Every, I still have four year olds. And I'm working twice, so they're in.
We charge you by the days. Don't worry about it.
It's all one to the short one, so. It works.
We could just hang on to them. Um, so picking on the plat to family-friendly bluegrass, country, mountain music concert. Our lineup so far, we've got three folks, so Alicia Kraft is coming and she's gonna play solo, um, acoustic. And, uh, Friendly Reminders played at the last one. They're, uh, at this time they were a trio last. They play good bluegrass music from Port Collins and, uh, Jay Shobrin's coming over from Laramie. So good followings. Um, last year we, or last week, I think we figured we had two-hundred-and-fifty-plus people there, so it's always a good turnout.
So you think it'll work between both of you?
Yeah, I think so. I, I did talk to her about just kind of, she was gonna do music and I said, how about we carry the music? So that there's no conflict in sound systems. She's running, um, Philly cook-off and then like pumpkin carving contests and games and things for the kids. So I kinda left it at, we'll see what vendors wanna go where and it's up to them, you know, like the vendors where they wanna get set up. But I think it's, I mean, I think it would be kinda nice for them to just be able to wander from here down there and have plenty of places to eat. Whatever.
The only potential issue would maybe be for the highway, first street, bus and that back and forth.
Yeah.
Kids riding bikes and stuff like that. We might not think about that.
We, I mean, can we do like special signage or something, slow down or put markers ahead, something up approaching that road just so like event happening or something?
That'd be something I'd try to contact with YDOT to get their signs or I can talk to the C manager, see by using his, um, his two portable ones, his trailer ones tied up currently on a road bridge event.
Yeah.
But I can see about his portable. That's what we use for Saratoga Days with portable one.
Yeah. That's the only, I mean, standalone, I think ours went really smoothly last in the spring. I think the only thing that might make it a little more complex is that there's another event going, but I also think that they complement each other, so.
And I'm in communication with Saint Anne, so we'll be out of there before any Saturday mass
Good.
happens that evening. We were out on May seventeenth and there was no no conflict there, so they're, they're okay.
So basically what's your task?
Uh, our time is eleven to four-thirty. Hers is, I think, ten to four-thirty or ten to four, something like that. Is it ten to four? Is, yeah. Very similar.
You guys have any problem helping get the cones out plenty of time or anything?
No, you've been really good about getting them out and having the street guys have them over there to set up.
Okay.
Any other concerns?
Although I have the issue of the two with the crossing, I'll see I'll getting the signage and I can use on my highway safety grant. I'm probably an extra officer working.
The council have any questions?
Hmm.
Uh, do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this special event permit for picking on the plat on Sep- October eleventh? From eleven to four-thirty?
I'll make a motion to approve the special events permit for picking on the plat.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're up next again.
Oh. Can I say it? With Rachel's ear too, so.
Oh. Come on up, please.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. Uh, so this is Carbon County. I'm presenting now or updating folks on the Carbon County Prevention Network. Um, community meetings in August, so we're talking about month of August, although it's very close to being over. August twenty-fifth is an in-person meeting at the community center at five-thirty. Uh, the theme this month really relates to going back to school. The start of a new school year can be an exciting time, but it can also bring challenges that impact students' mental well-being. It's important for parents, educators, and students to be aware of potential stressors and proactive strategies to maintain good mental health. Common challenges students might face include academic pressure, social adjustments, transitioning to a new environment, time management, and concerns about safety. To support student mental well-being, consider their following strategies. Open communication, establish routines, promote healthy habits, teach coping mechanisms, encourage breaks and downtime, set realistic expectations, monitor for changes in behavior, utilize school resources, and connect with school staff. There's some details and examples there in the notes if anybody wants to have a look at the records once those are published. Um, really good news on that same sort of supporting that note about supporting our folks. Sources of Strength at Kickoff that we had at the barn um, on August ninth was a huge success. We're really happy to announce that that we had over two-hundred-and-fifty people, close to two-fifty people show up and uh, line dance and eat burgers and hot dogs. And we had all kinds of contrib- contribution from community members. We had over a dozen volunteers help us with the setup. Uh, we had, um, businesses donate the food, the burgers, the buns, the hot dogs, the cookies, uh, the fruit, um, the drinks and everything were served by church members at St. Barnabas. Um, the DJ was a lot of fun. We had lots of people on the dance floor, lots of people playing games. So it was really, really great and it was a great way for us to kick off our program.
Good.
We wanna definitely send a shout out to Chris Osborne who donated the use of the facility and it was just a really amazing venue. Uh, this marks the start of an exciting year of sources of strength. Our boots-on-the-ground team, thirty trained peer leaders, we have thirty kids that are training, and ten adult advisors will be meeting a series of campaigns focusing on what our personal and collective strengths or our protective factors, those are the, um, represented items on the wheels that you see around town. Uh, what those protective factors can do to promote a well community. We'll also be offering an additional adult advisor training to supplement our leadership team. If you're interested in attending, please contact Rachel at three oh seven, three two nine, three one seven two. If you'd like to know more about this incredible program, stop in at any of the businesses with the wheel in the window. They have brochures and pamphlets that will tell you more. Or you can go to www.sourcesofstrength.org.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Kathy.
Okay, uh, next on items from the public will be Cindy Carr.
Council, Mayor Davis.
Hello.
Hello.
I have some concerns about the twenty-twenty-six proposed gym membership rate increase. And I put my thoughts in the form of a letter. So I'm gonna read it. It's short. It won't take much of your time. I respectfully submit this letter as a concerned and invested member of the town of Saratoga. I have great passion for the town of Saratoga Recreation, its programs and facilities for all ages. I considered it a privilege to have access to the community gym. To stay informed and support for the system, I have attended recreation commission, excuse me, commission meetings for the last several months. I along with more than a dozen recreation program members have discussed our frustrations and concerns about scheduling facility use with few with few resolutions. Resolutions. I've also had discussion with the mayor and town council members. At the July seventh, twenty-twenty-five rec commission meeting, Carter had the first draft of the PVCC gym and weight room membership packet twenty-twenty-six facility overview to be considered and discussed by the commission. I have attached a copy of the facility overview. His proposed rates reflect more than a seventy percent increase with the intention of raising them three percent annually in the future. For many seniors, this creates a financial burden and may make access to these amenities prohibitive. I understand that these changes are only under consideration, but I believe community members should have input in these types of drastic changes in a program that should be accessible by everyone. Also, as a dedicated pickleball player, I was concerned to see that the facility overview omens mention of the three pickleball courts, pickleball nets, while other sports facilities like basketball and volleyball are highlighted. This feels like a missed opportunity to acknowledge a rapidly growing sport and the community it serves. I respectfully urge the council to reconsider these rates and ensure that pickleball and its community are properly represented in future updates. Pickleball in particular is especially important for seniors who might be dealing with fixed income. They rely on these spaces for both physical activity and social connection. I fear that this demographic is being targeted. I believe that is a form of age discrimination, especially since most of the paid members that play pickle are sixty-plus years old. I ask that these concerns about the program description and rate adjustments be seriously considered before proceeding respectfully. And I had asked a couple of questions at the recommission meeting that were like, what is the justification for this rate increase? And if there was going to be any public comment, period. And I know that this is a draft, a first draft of these proposed rate increases. So, um, do you have any questions?
Uh, well, thank you for coming in, but I haven't seen any of the rate increases as any of the other council. It has not been presented to us in any way yet. I think, I think it must still be in the board over there.
So how many drafts does it go through before it reaches the town council?
Well, everything will be done there, then they'll make the recommendations to us and then we'll we make the final decision on whether it gets
Okay.
changed or anything. So I don't know. You know, where are you guys at on that?
I wasn't there that night, so, um.
Um, they just said that the commission would talk about it. And so, um, it didn't say, they didn't say how many drafts or if the public was gonna be included in any of that.
Well, the public's welcome to all the meetings.
Okay.
So.
Didn't get a chance to read my letter to the rec commission because they didn't have a meeting for August.
Right.
I will read it at their next meeting.
Okay, and you can ask them where they're at on it. You know, I, I knew that they were in the works of looking at different rates and everything. Uh, but we have not seen anything and I don't know where, where it actually is. I don't, I don't know if they've come back. Have they had, you guys haven't had any more discussion on that?
No, and we, we didn't have a meeting in August and won't have a meeting until I believe the eighth of September because our scheduled meeting falls on Labor Day.
Okay.
And just on that line too, that would be going into our next budget. The twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven budget. That won't change the budget that's set this year.
No, I know for twenty-twenty-six and it said, um, part of my notes was that it would be done by July of twenty-twenty-six. The new rates would be if the town council passes it, would go into effect July twenty-twenty-six. Do I understand that?
July thirty-first. Well, it'd be August first, twenty-twenty-six.
July first, July, July first. Is July first is the beginning of the new fiscal year?
Oh, it is. I was thinking July thirty. Okay, I'm sorry, July first, yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's a lot of, of looking at it before anything. Uh, we'll have budget meetings about it and everything because that'll be added to the town's budget.
I think my main concern is I'm hoping that the community or the public will get some input into this proposed rate change.
Okay, sure. Well, everybody has a right to stand up and say, and I'll give people that right in a council meeting.
Okay.
And there'll be open discussion on any new budget or budget changes. Uh, we just haven't had much in the past.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Hey, are there any additional items from the public?
Tarif. Mayor and council, I'm speaking as a community member who has dedicated hundreds of hours to the recreation department because I believe promoting physical and mental well-being is vital to any town. I urge the mayor and council to remember that your role is to serve your constituents and ensure our town remains a safe, thriving place for residents and visitors alike. You are also accountable for the actions of appointed and hired staff. Your priority must be to the people. When I was active on the commission, first as a member, then as a council liaison, we worked on a mission statement. I found no evidence of this in public records today, but in my records, the last iteration reads, the rec department exists to foster a thriving community by promoting physical and mental well-being for all ages, enhancing our environment's beauty and offering enriching leisure activities that contribute to health, safety, prosperity, and overall well-being of our residents. Bridging generations by offering programs for all ages that promote active lifestyles and help foster community connectedness. In the last few months, some questions and concerns have been expressed. What is the established process for communicating with the council and the community? What events has the recreation commission sponsored in the past year? In February, the recreation aquatic center- In February, the Recreation Aquatic Center Steering Committee presented. Updates and requested legal review of a land usage agreement and no follow-up has been shared. That same meeting raised quorum question, questions and concerns. Three members were present with two pending appointments and one vacancy. Technically, weren't three present, weren't, weren't three present members sufficient for quorum? Again, at the same meeting, the question of whether or not the secretary's seat was being advertised. And I raised that question and the commission president assured the crowd that it was. The secretary's seat is being held by someone who uh moved out of town October twenty twenty four. And it's continuing to be held by that person who lives out of state. Um, it's concerning that she still holds that in-town commission seat. And we want our commission members to be involved and present in our town. Uh, meeting recordings have been requested multiple times with no action taken. Um, are commission appointments being tracked and updated? Is documentation being properly maintained? The town website contains outdated information. Since ordinances are required for establishing municipal regulations and the rec commission follows similar guidelines to other boards. Why is public information so hard to access? Prior to leaving the commission, I built a spreadsheet of members and their terms to the best of my knowledge and available resources. At that time, there were six members, the rec director and the council liaison. Based on that information, terms have ended, requiring reappointments. And other seats are expiring soon, is there someone tracking that information? Basically, there's no accurate list of who sits on that board today. A twenty twenty two community survey revealed strong interest in expanding recreation department offerings. Residents requested special events like fall festivals, movies, arts and crafts, music, drama. Skating, cycling, water sports and pickleball activities. There was also demand for adult programs such as billiards, gentle fitness, cards, guest speakers, cornhole tournaments. Group bike rides and swim lessons for all ages. Additionally, the community emphasized the need for improvements to playing fields, indoor facilities, trails, parks and historical sites. And as for pickleball. Pickleball's popularity is growing nationwide and locally with many in our community enjoying its benefits. Local enthusiasts have supported its growth through a rec department sponsored tournament in twenty twenty two. And a clinic at the community center, regular play hours were maintained even without a director. Establishing a structured pickleball program would meet current demand, we currently have close to forty participants. Promote health and social connection, especially for those over fifty. And attract a broader demographic as the sports average age continues to decline to include younger players. Um, some facility and staff feedback that have been reported to me. Inconsistent information, hours listed on the website and Facebook don't match. Calendars across platforms, online printed and social media are frequently out of sync. And general information about programs, classes and membership is hard to find. Lack of accessibility. The director is frequently reported as unavailable with the office door closed during posted hours. Contact details and office hours are unclear or inaccurate. Additionally, many of the department posts on Facebook don't allow for feedback or questions. Unprofessional conduct, there have been multiple reports of rude behavior toward both regulars and visitors. Some participants have been asked to leave the facility for cleaning. Even when no other activities were scheduled, allegedly threats have been made about hiding equipment if complaints continue. Facility maintenance issues, locker rooms are reportedly locked to avoid cleaning. And bathrooms often lack basic supplies like soap, toilet paper and towels. Misuse of time and resources, residents have observed the director using town vehicles. During work hours while his personal vehicle remains at the rec center, many are questioning how his time is being spent. Especially given his repeated statements that he refuses to work beyond forty hours per week despite being salaried. Program concerns, league pricing has increased without clear justification. And inconsistency above, uh, beyond sports. Parents have voiced frustration over the youth basketball program's disorganization and lack of, lack of practice time. Soccer was canceled due to low interest, but many believe poor planning contributed to that outcome. Equipment and spending, members have requested more variety and additional weight options in the weight room. They've requested maintenance on bikes in the spin classroom and requested purchase of basic items like pickleballs. These requests appear to be ignored, while over thirteen thousand dollars was recently approved for a Stairmaster and single user trainer. There's been no explanation of how such purchases benefit the broader membership. Facility improvements and initial feedback, uh, the community members appreciated, uh, this is at the pool. Appreciated the upgraded pool facility and we're optimistic about improved water temperature and cleanliness following winter equipment replacement. When we kicked off this season, it, the pool looked beautiful, it was great, the water was clear and all of those um updates that they had made looked really good. Uh, but we encountered uh water temperature issues. Repeated requests from instructors and attendees to raise water temperature were denied citing chemical management concerns. Seniors, young children and regular swimmers consistently reported discomfort due to cold water, especially during cold weather. Returning lifeguard was told there was no budget to rehire her, yet lifeguards from Rollins were hired at a higher pay. Who experienced certified local lifeguards from previous seasons were overlooked. Although they were specifically staffed in the past to keep the pool open once school started. Rollins lifeguards began working before formal council approval, raising procedural concerns. Classes and open swim sessions were canceled hours in advance due to weather despite Wyoming's rapidly changing conditions. And this led to missed opportunities and frustration among regular attendees and visitors. The pool closed two weeks earlier than advertised disappointing pass holders who expected full season access. And given past concerns about pools' financial sustainability. Extending hours and staffing, especially on high-traffic days like July fourth, could improve public satisfaction and revenue. Um, for job descriptions. Um, the recreation director holds a vital role in ensuring smooth operations and public engagement. Some key responsibilities of the rec director is public communication, informing the community about programs, changes and updates. Grant writing, securing funding to support and expand recreational services. Digital presence, maintaining accurate and timely updates on the town's website and Facebook page, program coordination. Scheduling classes, events and recreational programs. Staff management, hiring, training and overseeing reaction, uh, recreation staff. And class announcements, promptly communicating cancellations or changes to scheduled activities. Direct assistant, historically. Past recreation directors operated without an assistant and only one had a designated pool manager. The creation of these roles reflects a growing need for leadership in programs, activities and facility operations. A highly qualified pool manager was hired and supported by the town who funded her certifications in water safety instruction, W S I. And lifeguarding. She received, she received strong praise for her performance at the community center facility. However, she resigned prior to the pool season beginning. The pool manager role requires willingness and ability to be certified in water safety instruction, lifeguarding. C P O certified pool operator and relevant experience managing aquatic programs. The individual hired, while personable and totally capable, lacked pool management experience. And only an openly shared discomfort with being in the water, raising concerns about alignment with job expectations. I urge the council to prioritize transparency, accountability and open communication. To ensure our recreation department truly serves the community it represents. These principles are not optional, they are foundational to public trust. When community members begin expressing concerns, using words like fear of retaliation, discrimination toward women. Or ageism, we must take notice. These are not just isolated complaints, they are signals of deeper systemic issues that if ignored. Can erode confidence in our local government and damage the reputation of our town. The implications are serious, perceived or actual bias in hiring, program or facility access. Or staff treatment can discourage participation, alienate residents and expose the town to legal and ethical scrutiny. More importantly, it undermines the inclusive, respectful environment we all strive to build. We ask not for perfection, but integrity. Let's ensure our recreation programs and the people who lead them reflect the values of fairness, professionalism. And community care. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Uh, none either, I was trying to keep up with everything and it sounds like our rec department is falling apart. Which I don't believe it is, uh, I will, I will look into some of these matters. And uh possibly sat down with you and talk some more. And we'll go over from there, right, thank you.
Can you request, before you do that, Megan sends out surveys for the rec department, or rec commission sends out surveys whenever they do. You know, like the kids' basketball and stuff like that, so you might request those. Um, and just see.
I talked to her about that.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, some of the stuff that was mentioned in that letter. You know, as far as being disapproved of some of those, you know, like the basketball and stuff like that, not being handled correctly. Never showed up in the surveys that I see.
So, the surveys that I mentioned too are surveys that we ran several years ago in general about how do we grow, grow the program? What are people interested in, so it's not just focus on the existing youth sports and other sports related items. A lot of people just, just, or, 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 running the program and just.
Right, well, and I only bring that up because you did specifically mention youth basketball as one of the things that people had problems with, so.
Any other discussion? Questions? Hey, we'll move on to reports from uh departments, town hall. Like you have ordinance number eight, eight, eight.
This will be the second reading, this is um, the name, title three. Title reads, town of Saratoga ordinance number eight, 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 and ordinance menu title two, chapter two, zero, four. Section two, five, zero, four, number one, zero, of the town search on this code concerning regular council meeting dates.
Questions? She stated this is just, all we're doing is changing the date. From the first and, or Tuesday to the first and third Wednesday. Uh, any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number eight, eight, eight on a second reading?
I would make a motion to approve ordinance eight, eight, eight on a second reading.
Yeah, second. I'll second it. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Opposed?
Next, um, Shannon Fagan, the transportation director for, so district number two, she was planning on being here, she got pulled away. To a friends meeting, she wrote a letter. Um, good afternoon, council members, I am writing on behalf of the Department of County School District, Transportation Department. Mr. Johnson and I have discussed the placing of bus stop signage at a few stops in Saratoga, mainly at Third and Main. They have four students there, Ninth and Rochester, which they have six students, Eighth and Rochester, five students. Seventh in Rochester, six students, Ninth and, Ninth and Farm, five students. Thirteenth at Saratoga Avenue, both entrances to Madison Waters with eighteen students there. We discussed, most of the bus stops would be safer for our students to identify official bus stops in Saratoga. And better for civilians to identify areas of possible more student crossings. The above listed streets have the most traffic and most students, and I was thinking if. If you wanted like T post type signs, and if purple and gold with bus signage or I research other meetings at the council would like. Figured with our Wyoming wins, T posts might be the solution. Thank you for your time and consideration, if you have any questions, comments, please feel free to contact me anytime, I have her email and email.
We have an issue with school bus stop?
Um, we've had some complaints of vehicles passing school buses. Lieutenant Morris was actually supposed to be reaching out to Ms. Fagan to get a copy of this year's bus routing stops when we do extra patrols in those areas. Um, biggest complaints I've had are up at the trailer park. Feeding through there, the zone has been reduced for head start down to twenty miles an hour through that as a school zone. Um. There are several stops along Rochester.
Mm-hmm.
Before the signage, okay, go to Henry, but I think we probably have to go along with the. Got the control manual for their designated signage, I don't know if we could do just, I need a T posts.
Yeah, we want to do M U T C D standards, one of those, I've. I'd be concerned like with the lack of inconsistency, because if we, we have bus stop signs, we want signs, I think, for every bus stop. You know, just so kids were, they'll be all the same throughout. I think it's a good idea, they don't have that kind of awareness, so at least younger kids who are just start know that this is where I need to be. I think it's kind of a catch twenty-two either way.
It could be kind of, we don't want to do all or nothing, yeah.
You know how many there are by tent?
Bus stops?
Yeah.
I don't, I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood, probably thirty or forty in town. Especially since they're doing every block on Rochester between Six and Tenfish.
Wow. It's expensive to rent.
Me, I, I can say, let me talk to. Couple of traffic guys to kind of see what storm is. I don't go through other communities and see like bus stop signs.
Well, I don't either, I don't either, especially school bus, you know? I'd like to.
I was meant to, the residents need to be educated a little bit more.
I'd like to have some more information on it before we just start putting up signs.
Now, stop school bus is a pretty good sign right there.
Yeah, it's pretty big and yellow.
And lights and everything.
And most, all the new ones have a sign that comes out that says stop.
Just don't see him other, like you drive around, I don't see him, there may be a reason.
Most of the time people pass, it is because the bus pulls off the street. When it should stop in the street.
Right, but.
The bus drivers need to take that into consideration, to stay in the street when they stop to let the kids out. Because that's what stops the traffic, you know?
Being concerned is not so much with the bu, the bus when it's there, it's when the kids are there before the bus gets there. Because I know when I'm coming to work, um, they're meandering all over. And, and I think maybe get in touch with the schools would be a better, and say, hey, kids, you need to, you know. Educate the kids on what they need to do.
To stay in the loading and unloading area versus wandering around. And especially up there at Madison Waters, because they're usually out dinking around in the park there and.
And you got so many people.
So maybe we could get, not putting more work on your plate, John, but like. If, you know, police officers could go to the elementary schools and be like, hey, do this.
We put a sign there all the time, if they're still out doing cartwheels over the park, like they.
Yeah, I don't know many kids that really pay a lot of attention to signs, you know?
People coming over to the bus, but if we have to say, hey, this is for you.
Yeah.
There used to be a bus hut up at the, kind of.
I was gonna say, that would be the best things, to have a couple of those bus huts like you used to see. Especially when it's January and the wind's blowing fifty miles an hour up there on the hill. A windbreak of some sorts would be nice.
So. Let's uh, I would like to table this for a little bit until we get some more information, I'm totally not against putting out signs. Uh, I'll try to get with. Shannon.
Okay, put me with Sagan and possibly Mr. Jennings Superintendent. Actually nail down what they're wanting, what's going on.
You were gonna visit with a couple of highway guys? Yeah, would that, council in favor of that?
And maybe talk to the, the trailer court and see if they want to put a bus hat.
Well, that might be too, yeah. That sound good to everybody? We'll move on to the police department.
Later. Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, for my report tonight, we've had a busy couple of weeks. There was ninety-fourish calls, I think, in the last two weeks for law. Um, but other things we've had going on. We have, first thing I wanted to bring up before I forgot about it, our generator swap over to the entire town hall project. Got people's hopes up up front. I was talking to them, I think it was this Friday, but it'll be actually Friday, August twenty-ninth. When they're looking at doing that. Um, I didn't know if we wanted to close town hall for that day because town hall is going to be without power for most of it. During the changeover. They'll be changing the way the power is routed in and where the generator comes into everything. Originally, it said Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
No, it started, it was gonna be on a Thursday is what we planned, twenty-eighth. Then after further discussion with the electrician, um, where he thought maybe Friday, since as we're down to just one person that day, I'm not sure if you'll still be out of town that Friday or if you'll be back.
No, I'll be, I'm actually got something going on that day, so that would work out great.
Yeah, I'm gonna be out of the office. It'd just be one of the ladies up front would get a bonus day off if we did that. We will, in the, um, officer squadron, we'll still have power because apparently the generator will still be running powering that far while they're doing the rest of their stuff. So if you really wanted someone here, they could be stuck over there and we just direct everybody over towards that door for the day.
It's not gonna be without power. There's not much you can do. This council want to do, just close it. Think if we post it now, probably should, it's gonna be closed on the twenty-ninth for maintenance.
Right, and I just realized I don't make a four day weekend also.
Those Labor Days on Monday.
I don't know if they, I don't know about that one.
Little inside plotting going on.
I was totally planning for this Friday, so that surprised me. Actually, I was doing my phone over here. I was using calculator and looking at the calendar.
I don't see why it would be a problem.
I don't either.
Uh, did I get that in the motion from someone?
I'll make a motion for the power change on Friday, the twenty-ninth. Town, I've closed town hall for the Friday, the twenty-ninth.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Here we have the motion and the second to close the town hall, August twenty-ninth. Uh, Friday, August twenty-ninth, uh, for maintenance, electrical maintenance, get our generator up and running. There any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? You want to get that published, get it in the paper? And, uh, yeah, we'll post it around town, post it on the doors. Alright, thank you, sir. On that.
Next thing I have on my list, um, Officer Lear and K nine Argus, we're back down in Colorado, August first for some more canine training. Um, K nine Argus got certified in pre additional narcotic detections. Uh, they added MDMA, which is ecstasy, uh, psychedelic, psychedelic mushrooms, and then marijuana. So he's now certified for heroin, cocaine, uh, cocaine base and crack cocaine, methamphetamines, fentanyl, MDMA, psychedelic mushrooms, and marijuana. And then also actually, not long after, he was called out by the sheriff's office to assist on a traffic stop last week where they did detect and locate, um, marijuana and methamphetamines after a positive alert from Argus. As well with that certification, he did receive his patrol certification, which is tracking and retaining. Um, at this point, we don't have him authorized to do that part under his contract. I'm not going to bring that forward today, but if we want to possibly start bringing in the tracking, that'd be something we'll look at at later dates and discuss further. It is an option now though on this canine. Next thing I've been working on, I did fill out a special use permit, which will be coming up to the planning commission this next week.
On September ninth?
September ninth. They're looking at building a new dog pound. Location we're looking at using is up at the old East Ball Field by the dog park. Which moves it further away from any residences, people being around. I thought that location would be good also because it'll be easier for the volunteers to exercise the dogs at the dog park. Um, that'll go to the planning commission if approved. What I'd like to do is get permission to start working with Must Love, um, Must Love K nine, I think is the name of her group, for funding to get donations to fund the building of a new um, dog pound facility. The one we currently have has been having some aging maintenance issues in its location. Doesn't work out well. It'd give the public works guys a lot more space if we move it out of there, especially with the moving of their fences. And what we do is build it. My, our initial plan, we're still in the planning stage. We're looking at kind of a building in the center, four kennels off each side. So then it would have eight kennels and a workspace in the center. They're hoping to get all funded by donations. What I'm looking for tonight is just permission to start working on that with the nonprofit. Work on donation for building the facility if it's approved. At special use.
I don't have a problem with it. I would say move forward with it. Just keep us posted, but what's council want to do?
Works for me.
Put down the form of, well.
I think this is more of a soft approval and then if it gets passed, planning commission, then we should pay our approval to start moving forward for it. Then talking about the other stuff we had coming up, it's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to request to reapply to continue doing our high visible enforcement, which is the grants that I received last year from Y dot that gives us the three thousand dollars for additional overtime for DUI enforcement. And then twenty-five hundred dollars additional overtime for occupants safety. This is time I use help cover overtime. For, um, holiday DUI enforcement, we have extra officers out, New Year's, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Fourth of July. Um, I'm looking to use some of this time for the fall festival event, stuff that we have coming up now. And so I'm just asking permission for is to go ahead and reapply to get that grant next year also from Y dot.
Do I have a motion for him to go ahead and apply for that grant?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and apply for the grant.
Called high profile grant?
It's the high visibility enforcement is what Y dot calls it. We already have separate line items for it. We've been using it. It'll continue on.
Have a motion on the table for for the chief to apply for the high visibility profile grant. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Alright, thank you. My first actual agenda item is a quote modification. This is for the upfitting of the twenty twenty-five Tahoe, which we have sitting over in the parking lot. If everybody wants to look at a twenty twenty-five Tahoe right now, it's just regular Tahoe, but it's there. Uh, so what we did was we made some changes to the original quote. We've actually cut off some equipment that we already had to put into it, so we saved some costs there. But upon receiving the Tahoe, found that it did not come with a spotlight in the A post. Um, while the new vehicles, they're no longer recommending or allowing you to drill through those A posts anymore because of the airbags and everything else to install the standard kind of spotlight that we've done in the past. So the most logical replacement we've come up with is manufactured by Whelan Lighting Company. And so the cost of the new spotlight, control head, mount and installation um, is what actually raised the price of the quote. But the price of it comes to approximately a thousand-ish dollars in, before labor of installing. The installing of this one, the labor's included in the already outfit of this vehicle, so there's no extra cost for that. So the light and equipment is nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. But the actual change to our quote because of other stuff that was removed, it's actually only increasing the quote by six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. So I'm looking to do is change, the original quote that was approved was thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents to get the new quote price. Lost my page. There it is, forty thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and nineteen cents. So that reflects that six hundred and sixty-eight dollar and seventy-eight cent increase.
So it was thirty-nine what?
Originally, it was thirty-nine, nine forty-eight, forty-one. The new quote is forty thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and nineteen cents.
This is for a spotlight, you say, or?
Yeah, this is adding, it's a remote controlled spotlight that actually mounts on the driver's side fender is where these ones mount.
It stays there all the time?
Yeah, it swings around, goes into a little sleep position, and then you wake it up and it has program settings where it can automatically come back to like one of three different settings, I think, and then you can move it wherever you want it.
Now, is the manufacturer taking into considering, consideration what material that fender's made out of? Because those are aluminum.
Yes, they
Vibration will.
Custom brackets made for each different vehicle type. That's eighty-seven dollars of it is for the bracket for the twenty twenty-five Tahoe. Yeah, pretty much everything anymore is aluminum on all these bodies.
Well, and the vibration of something that heavy on, it'll just crack the fender out where it's mounted if it's not done right.
And this was overlooked and, uh?
No, on the original quote, I was apparently mistaken. I thought it was coming with the light already built into the A post from the factory. They had two different options on the P P B and S S B model vehicles. Apparently that some are with and some without for some reason. I don't know why they don't do them all with. But then the Tahoe that we received was not factory installed with the spotlight. Once we got here, that was the first thing we noticed that there's no spotlight there.
So what's council so choose to do?
Uh, they need a, they need a spotlight.
I think they need a spotlight.
Well, I'd make the motion to go ahead and pay this revised quote here for the price of six hundred and sixty-eight dollars is that what it'll be more than?
Yeah, it's six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents higher than the original quote.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Thank you. I'll have him continue on with ordering equipment for it. And we will be taking it over to Cheyenne to the upfitter on September second is the date we have planned to drop it off.
What day?
September second. They move into the new building September first, so he asked us to wait till after then.
And are they gonna be doing the deca, the vinyl and stuff on it when they do the install?
Good question. Yes, they are. I thought was having it done locally, but yeah, they'll be doing that over there while they're doing that, while they're doing the install. Uh, last thing I have is the Motorola service agreement. It's an annual contract that was going on before me. Um, we went over everything speaking with Karina. It looks like it's the same price as it was previously. Uh, she's been paying it monthly though. And so we actually got it to where we can just pay it annually because it's all gonna come out of the budget anyways, and it's already budgeted for in my I T line items. But it's eighteen thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and forty-one cents. And this is for the maintenance on all the radio equipment that is up at the water tower that is used for the police department and fire department.
So the fire department's been involved with this?
I believe it covers their equipment also with Yeah, so I don't think they have a separate bill for the maintenance. It's just all covered under. And we've just always covered it as a part of our dispatching services for them.
Okay. We may have to look at that a little bit. Questions?
Been talking to Karina, we're just gonna pay it as just one lump sum. Now she doesn't have to write a check every month for it.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay this, uh, Motorola agreement for the radio inf- uh, radio equipment at the water tower? Eighteen thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and forty-one cents.
You're just asking to pay this once a year? It's the same amount. She's wouldn't be paying monthly?
Well, it's two, this is the new annual service agreement. So every year this comes before the council.
Right.
And the only real change we're making to it, the amount's the same, but instead of paying it monthly, we're just gonna pay it one time this year.
Okay.
So it's approval of the amount and to pay it just once.
Same amount, right?
Correct. It's same as last year, same total amount.
What do you want to make?
I'd make a motion to pay the Motorola service agreement for radio infrastructure in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty-one cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed?
I think that's everything I have for tonight.
Thank you, John.
Hey, we'll move on to the fire department.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
How are you at that?
I'm here. Um, first off, um, we are, everything that I'm talking about tonight is all been budgeted for. Um, the first one is the equipment that we had discussed about for the ladder truck that we have, um, all of the requirements and stuff from, uh, that I S O requires us to have on that apparatus. We got ahold of them today and just verified the, the quote that we had done prior to, um, now it's fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents for that part of it. And I suppose probably the best bet would be to just vote on that one first before we move on. Solve for the ladder truck. That, this, yeah, this, this particular one is just, it's all the equipment that's required by I S O to have on this truck being compliance. Play the game.
This is from Curtis, right?
Yeah, this is the, the one from Ella Curtis.
Questions? Well, I'll take a motion if somebody wants to make a motion to go ahead and purchase this equip in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
We have in the budget?
Yeah, it's a budget.
I'll make the motion to approve this purchase for the ladder truck.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Um, secondly, I guess we found out the other, just a couple of days ago that, uh, the company that does our, our hose testing, Fire Cat, is gonna be in town, um, Saturday. Do best hose, this is another annual, uh, project that we do. Uh, there again, this has all been budgeted as well. And I believe it's going to be this, uh, four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, um. There might be a little bit of difference on there because the school actually had some of our hoes last year. They were trying to water ball fields and stuff. Get everything we had tested. So there might be three or four more sticks on top of that at the forty-two cents a foot, uh, for testing, so. Um, but it's gonna be right around that forty-six. Um, but it's gonna be right around that forty six twenty number, the hose testing.
They're trying to do this Saturday?
This Saturday of all days. Which with that being said, we'll probably end up closing the street off up at the ambulance barn where we close that block off on. That's.
Yeah. That's Murble.
One next to the, the ambulance barn that goes.
River, River Street?
No, well, right at River Street, but it's the one that goes by Kendall's, but Kendall's old house.
Isn't that, isn't that Murble?
I think so.
I think that's Murble.
So. We usually just shut that block down for that day so they can.
Do you have any issues with that?
No.
Okay. Well, do we wanna go ahead and approve this? I'll take a motion to go ahead and approve this. Uh. Service test agreement for this hose. For approximately four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve this uh checking the hose for four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey.
All right, and last but not least, um. We will be having a company come in and uh test all of our S C B A masks that we use and also service. Um. Service the uh S C B A compressor as well as um change filters and stuff on that. There again, it's another annual, annual cost. Uh, all, all the money should be budgeted for it. That should be somewhere around twenty five hundred bucks for that. Um, and then at a later date, we'll be coming back for uh. Agro testing for all the S C B A bottles. Um, we haven't got a date scheduled for that or, or a firm price on that yet, so. So right now, just the twenty five hundred for uh the testing of the S C B A masks and the, the service and filter. Look on the S C B A compressor.
Questions? Here, we want to entertain a motion to go ahead and pay this twenty five hundred dollars for S C B A testing in the pump. Hooker on the pump?
Yeah, to, they go through and they change the oil and stuff on the compressor and the filters on it and stuff, so.
I'll make a motion to do the twenty five hundred dollars S C B A service of the compressor and the mask.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That should be all the much mass for tonight anyway, so. Um, just a couple of other things. Um, I think everybody should know that we're under stage one fire restrictions, at least in the county. Um, I had a call from Casey the other night about burning in fire pits and stuff in town. And obviously, I talked to the fire board about that, and the towns have their own. Rules and regulations on stuff in the town, in the municipality. I don't know if that's something that we wanna sit down and have a discussion about. One of these first days or. Like, cause it's, it's up to the town how they wanna, how they wanna handle it. That would.
That would, since city limits.
Yeah, if it's in the city, yeah, so. But I don't know, like I said, I don't know the description, the, the discrepancies on it all, but um. I think Casey had said that one, there was somebody who complained because their neighbor had a. Fire burning in their fire pit, surrounded by lush green grass, and I, I don't know the whole story, but.
I have to read.
Yeah.
Segregation, yeah.
Like I said, it's, you know, what's good for the county isn't necessarily the same for the, for the municipality, so. We might just sit down, have a discussion and see how, how we wanna do that.
Yeah.
Forward, so. Um, other than that, uh Bowl Fest is this weekend, so we'll be dealing with that on Saturday. Friday evening and Saturday. Um, and then we're still trying to get all the radio communication stuff working like it's supposed to with the. Combined dispatch, so other than that, that's really all I have.
Any questions for Pat?
How's the combined dispatch going for the fire department? Good?
It's going pretty good. Yeah, we, we're having trials and tribulations just like everybody else is, but we're working through them, so. Like John, or some of our communications issues is our biggest problem right now, but we're working through that, so. Yeah, I don't think it's all that bad.
Well, as part of dispatch, we're doing great, yes. Getting the radio waves from here to there, vice versa.
Yes. Reliably, we can get them from there to here. It's reliably, that's the problem, so.
Did you manage to take care of some of the cameras issues? They found some wrong frequencies programmed into the console, so they got that fixed. Yeah, now we're just working on.
Our biggest problems, we're just trying to go from hole to hole from here to there, so.
Yep.
So, no, we're making progress.
Slow with your.
Can't figure out a way to go through the fiber from there to here. There's lots of different options that just, we've got a few more in the works that, trying some of the less expensive ones first. We've already got, there's already pre-existing microwave stuff for the simulcast system that the county put up that we can probably utilize some of that on. We're just trying to cross some of those avenues and see, see where we end up, so.
Yeah.
Biggest delays have been just getting all the techs together to get it done. Yeah, there's four or five people involved in the, the same equation, so trying to get everybody in the same place at the same time is virtually impossible. That's all I got.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks.
Pat, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the rec department.
I'm gonna be here tonight, so. Um, first off. We've got really great feedbacks on this. This, this year with some stuff. The staff up there, um, we did have to focus early, um, so the last day was Friday. Um, just due to lack of staffing, all the kids went back to school, so most of them are in sports, so. We didn't have the staffing available for the lifeguards. Um, next is flag football. Um, we did get um NFL flag this year, so it's gonna. Be a little more exciting for the youth. Um, registration opens September fifth, oh, sorry. The season is gonna be September fifth through October seventeenth, uh, staying registration closed until August twenty ninth, and it is going to be thirty five dollars. For child picture. And then we do have a pickleball league. Um, and that's gonna be September twenty second through October twenty ninth. Registration closes September eighth, and that's gonna be twenty dollars.
Hey, on this school closing, the last day was Friday.
Yes, sir.
But they're still doing.
But yes, I'm sorry, the water aerobics are still gonna be in the afternoon, um, in the evening. I believe it's. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday? Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday, in the evening.
Well, we tried to, we tried to work at where we keep it open, uh, Labor Day, and we just can't, we don't have no help. The lifeguard is from everywhere. Nobody returned calls. All the, all the ones we use locally are in uh. Uh, some sort of sports activity in school, and so that didn't work out quite the way we wanted it. Uh, as far as the cool water, I'm gonna address this. Uh, we're looking at getting a cover that should help that at night. Uh, and that's because early in the mornings, that, it gets so chilly here in the evenings that the pool won't keep up. So, and we're looking at a couple of other things with some pumps and everything too that uh may assist. When it's closed, they're gonna start testing that, so that should help with the, the cooler water in the mornings.
It's surprising to me, because we replaced that stator, this one turner, it needs a stator. And improved performance on the pump. There's things that would like even flow was off, all that. But we've never had that issue in the past, even when we had same low temperatures, it's eighty in the morning. So for us to have consecutive days where the water's like seventy five, it's cold.
Yeah.
So, it's just, it's a new experience. We had this last year, we fucked.
Well, we thought we had a fix, but it didn't, and we're looking at the cover now, uh, that'll be put out at night.
It's also been a lot cooler here lately at, at night. I, I know I turn my air conditioner off because it's so, it gets in the high thirties, low forties. And usually summers, I turn it on in May and I don't turn it off until the end of October most of the time, but.
Cold water happens in July.
Yeah.
It's not just recent, it's been all summer.
Yeah. We've just had a lot of cool evenings too.
Yeah.
Nights.
But anyway, we are, we are checking into that. Things to change that, uh. Is that it with?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to, oh.
Um, is there a way, and I don't know. With town funds, but the rec department to have some sort of automatic payment for membership. Class of her rec mem- rec membership payments. Um, cause right now, if you wanna pay monthly, a check part down, you can protect.
Mm-hmm.
Is kind of challenging some many things. Um, but it just feels like there should be some way simple to have it automated, so you could just automatically deduct from your account every month. Or pay online. I know those services exist for nearly just about anything for the YouTuber that you wanna support. Um, so I, I was wondering if there's any way for the rec department to. Have that technology, and so I, and I just didn't know if there was something specific with the fee. Is it a government entity or town funds, that there was, it feels like there should be some sort of easy way to make. Right payments, but any even for like few sports, um, it's like a lot of that stuff.
They can't come pay, they can't come pay at the office here. For them payments for the rec stuff, they can. You could come to the town hall.
Either way, it's like in this stadium, we, you guys have.
Yeah, okay. Let me look into that and talk with the girls on that.
You guys pay for monthly gym access.
But let me see, let me look into that. I will double check that for you, McCall. Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to uh Department of Public Work, Mr. Emmer.
Good, everybody. Um, kickoff point one real quick, so this was the follow-up to the uh right away. Next adjustment over there at the shop, gave me had before, but it's not a lot of inflation we got now, so the easiest time to do is go to two ten foot gates. This is a price for that same guy to do the fence to throw those amps. Um, where he's not bid for him again, that did uh Nash, um, works out pretty well. Cutting right on that one.
Questions about that? Are the gates? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this? Uh. Eight. Set up over.
I'll make a motion to approve it, the gate setup.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah.
Updates real quick, the west bench, the big sewer project that uh we awarded to Rocky Mountain up on the hill there, they're gonna start on Monday. So you see all the pipe and stuff rolling into town up there, so we got about thirty five hundred feet to dig, and then they're gonna line about thirty five hundred feet. They get run, all on that. Make sure, you know, that staging area, if it starts getting dusty, we'll give the water down. So there, we've got a plan. There'll be lots of notices and stuff on the hill if your sewer's gonna be affected for a few hours or something, that make sure that people know what's going on. Et cetera. We're there on Elm Street, we're, you know, ninety five percent of the way done, everything's open. We got some cleanup and stuff to do over there, but we got some other. More time sensitive stuff that we've moved on to. We'll go back here shortly and get the rest of the side of the roads cleaned up and. But they'll get a little uh kind of a financial breakdown of. Engineers estimate for what we thought construction would cost for the contractor versus what we spent on that. It's quite a bit different, so once we get all the invoices in, we'll tally that up and get it over to you. Um, favor worked great, and we have a single problem with it, the one that we ran in, which was awesome. Bringing Tyler over was a good idea.
They were helpful.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's a lot of little increases on there that we would have flound, you know, we would have gotten figured out, but we would have floundered.
Yeah.
For a bit, and probably had some stuff to tear out and redo.
Good.
That worked out good. Uh, we got some core drilling going on for the sewer project going underneath the river. We're producing GeoTech, um, E A is, so if you see drilling rigs in town along the river. That's what they're doing, just so we can get bedrock depth and whatnot as we work through that, so. Might see drilling rigs down here next to the highway, that's what they're doing. They're probably next couple of days. Those are kind of the uh bigger items, so we did complete the leak survey. We didn't find as many as I thought. Would, which, I mean, which is good, but also bad, I guess, because we've got water loss. We'll get the full report out when they get it to me. Uh, we did have one on, a pretty good one out there by the Forest Service that they found on the newer plastic stuff, which was uh. Pretty surprising, and that guy did a heck of a job, and Brandon with him the whole time, and that dude checked everything. You could put a mic on it. So. Um, but I'll, I'll email you guys, copy that and put it out once we, once we get it.
Okay.
You guys have any public works questions? Money Commission?
Yes, please.
Um, so, and McCall, do you have anything to fill in? This is what I allegorically gathered. We, we put out a public hearing to update our zoning map, and the update is for, that several zoning changes that people have petitioned for in the last few years. And the current map doesn't reflect those, was, that's basically the main driver for this. And we also provided a zone for like the lake, Kathy Globe, just an open space one, and then for the airport, so whenever the airport gets around to doing their. Um, design standards and all that jazz, we don't have to redo this for them to finish their stuff off. We changed nobody's private property, no private property was changed or anything like that. It's just reflecting what was already done. And we did the public hearing just to make sure, you know, there was a lot of turnover where I'm at in the last few years to make sure we didn't, if somebody knew something we didn't know. Was mainly why we did that. So, you guys wanna look it over? If you don't have any issues with it, I'll draft the organs that actually adopts that as the updated map. Put that on the next, next item, but in a public hearing, you guys made a recommendation to adopt this.
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate that adding the zone for the airport and the zone for open space were, were the things that were recommended in the two thousand six. Plan, we did that, it was recommended that those, that we did, and they've just never been. Officially added, so that was kinda where that motivation came from, in addition to updating things that.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh. You guys, I would say let's have Emory move forward with the ordinance, uh, because we need this updated, we need this. Get started on this. Do you want that in form of motion or just go ahead?
I'll just draft it, and then if you, you guys between now and then, next meeting, if you got some questions or changes or whatever, we'll just table the organs till the following meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Lot of big to do. Um, we had a variance application that was uh missing some stuff, lacking signatures, so that was tabled. I believe, so I'll try to get ahold of that guy. Um, he's another character that I think will probably have some opportunity with these changes that you guys are looking at adopting. Um, in the next, you have anything to add, McCall, from last meeting? I wasn't there, that's why I'm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Asking, and then we have our uh ordinance eight eighty seven gen. Any breath?
Ordinance number eight eight seven, ordinance submitting title eighteen, chapter eighteen point fifteen, section eighteen point fifteen point zero three zero. And eighteen point thirteen point zero five zero, as well as title eighteen, chapter eighteen point eighteen. Section eighteen point eighteen point zero three zero. And eighteen point eighteen point zero five zero, as well as chapter eighteen point twenty one. Section eighteen point twenty one point zero three zero, and eighteen point twenty one point zero five zero. As well as chapter eighteen point twenty four, section eighteen point twenty four point zero three zero. And eighteen point twenty four point zero five zero, and also chapter eighteen point twenty seven, section eighteen point twenty seven. Zero three zero, and eighteen point twenty seven point zero five zero, as well as chapter eighteen point zero six. Section eighteen point zero six. Section eighteen point zero six point zero seven zero. Of the Town of Saratoga Municipal Code concerning accessory uses and accessory building setbacks, highest placement requirements in residential zoning districts. Within Saratoga, as well as clarification of setback definitions allowing syntax induction. Mary following, following was built prior to the establishment and zoning regulations in Saratoga to provide that good.
One comment, um, Gary brought up, uh, and Bob, if you look at the minimum lot depths, and I figured out why this is the way that it is. Um, when you multiply them together, they don't add up to the minimum of lot or footage. What I gather is, this is written clear as mud is about a lot of the other old ones. So it's saying, if you're going to have a lot depth of a hundred and twenty, that's as less you can go, but you're still required to make up that. Area with your width. So that's why I think we have all these seventy two hundred lots that have sixty by one twenty instead of sixty by a hundred. So I don't think it's, it's just written really bad, but that's why I think it's written that way. You're still required to make up that. Area, but these are the minimums each way that you can use to get to that area. So I was going to suggest we change it or whatever, but I don't think we need to. I think we need to clarify it in the future. So just, yeah, just.
Well, we could, we could pass it on or approve it on second reading and make those clarifications for the third and final reading.
Yeah, I'd got to think about how we would. Cause I think the intent is to have those minimum lot sizes like they want, but it just needs to be more clearly written out that if you have one minimum, you don't get to use the other one.
If you took the minimum square footage off there, then the minimum sizes would be as written.
Right, but I, I don't think that's the, I think the intent is to have a fourteen thousand square foot minimum. But the way they have it wrote is you can only have a minimum block depth of a hundred and twenty square feet. So then that means you're going to end up with a width of a hundred and twenty square feet. Well, if you use the minimum of eighty feet, you're going to have a hundred and sixty. Foot depth, I think is what they're insinuating. It's just not written well at all.
Mm hmm. So the verbiage just needs to be changed, isn't it?
Yeah. Um. Or you put in there.
Any other questions on this?
Was that the only one? Emery, uh, to just the fourteen hundred, fourteen thousand?
Well, they're all written for every zoning.
Like that?
Yeah. The intent there is just not clearly conveyed.
Right.
Well. Your square footage, if you figure the square footage on seventy two hundred is the same thing as six thousand.
Mm hmm.
If you look at the minimums.
Right.
So I have a seventy two hundred.
I think that's the intent, but they need to have it written out that.
But the way it's written, it would bring the question, why have, yeah.
Six thousand or?
Exactly.
Two hundred, so.
I'd like to go ahead and approve it on second reading. Now that clarification made and we can read it out loud, the third and final reading. So, sound good to you, Emery? Thinking good, or do you want to? Table it until we get that changed in a minute?
I mean, if we're, if we're in the agreement, the intent, the lot areas as they're written are the intent. I think you could add just clarification, interpretation clarification. But if we're in, if we think that the lot minimums are. Based nearly off the dimensions and we are going to change that lot area minimum, I think we need to table it because the work changes the substance of.
Well, I think we. We're already redoing it, so why not have it right? Yeah. Begin with. Turns out.
We need the minimum.
Think of it as seventy two hundred.
No, I think the intent is that they have seventy two hundred foot lots. That's why I think the intent is. I think what we need is a clarification that says. You don't get to use both minimums at the same time. Not necessarily that. That's what they're alluding to, that. If, if your depth is going to be only a hundred and twenty, then you're responsible for making up the rest of the square footage using width, but all it just says is eighty and twenty. So. Um.
So they can say a minimum square footage and a minimum lap depth.
I, I think it probably, I mean, I think it's like two or three sentences to make it more clear.
It maybe should say combined lot depth or width. Should equal fourteen thousand or whatever, if you're going to stick with that number.
Right, right, or some, or.
Or change the number. Minimum.
Let's tell you what.
I have a motion to table the second reading on ordinance number eight eight seven for clarification on. Uh, zoning and block sizes.
I'll make a motion to table title eight eighty seven on its second reading, and we make a few clarifications.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay. What was something creative? There's a lot of stuff like that in there where it's, you know, it's precluded and whatnot. If you don't catch that, then.
Mm hmm.
So, yeah, we'll get it figured out. Not a big deal. Um. Old signs, we should have mockups for the wayfinding project done by us by September first. So then we'll send them over to Planning Commission, make sure we're all on the same page and kick it to you guys before we pull the trigger and have them start making them.
Cool. All right.
Or, any planning questions?
No. You want to move on to your water and sewer joint power board?
Yes, so, um, kind of historically. We have done a lot of like pass through invoicing with the Joint Powers Board, like they'll get a bill, they'll bill us, we'll approve it, we'll pay them, then they'll pay that. So we're, we're not doing that anymore because it's redundant. They didn't think it was necessary. You guys approved anything anyway. So now at this point, we're, we're basically just simplifying things and we're paying the bills. You guys are kind of approving them, or you guys are approving them. They have fifty six thousand bucks that they really don't need to just sit there and do nothing. So if we build a wild class account for them. Um, they can make the interest off that. And I said, I'm good with that. They're good with that. I think it's a really good. You know, opportunity for us to work together. It shows a certain level of trust. Um, but I want that deposit to be acknowledged in a meeting, so we have a history of when that started. And what the original amount was. And then we did, me and Karina talked to Tim, who's the, uh, our auditor. And, uh, that we would call it like a fiduciary account, but for simplification purposes, we would just establish the Joint Powers Board Enterprise Account and accept the deposit of. Whatever that number is there. So that way on our books, they'll have their entire, it'll just be the Joint Powers Board Fund. So for some reason, we have to cut them a check. That's where it gets debited out of. If they make a deposit, that's where it goes into. To show up on audit like that, we're not running their money along with our general fund money, so it doesn't get lost.
Good.
That's the.
Next step.
Mm hmm.
So we need a motion to set up a joint powers account.
Joint Powers and Work Enterprise Fund.
Enterprise Fund for the amount of fifty six thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars and sixty eight cents.
Yeah, that'd probably work.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'd make the motion to start, uh, uh.
Joint Powers.
Yeah, you know, Joint Powers Board, uh, for fifty six thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars and sixty eight cents.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And at the last meeting, I mean, we just kind of went over the, the bigger projects that we had going on, mainly the West Bench one, I kind of updated them on where we were with the river project. Well, those are kind of the all consuming items at the moment. I got nothing else on them.
Yeah, any questions for Emery? Hey, their next meeting is September tenth, twenty twenty five, six P M at, uh, Community Center. Thanks, Emery.
Thanks, Emery.
Thank you, Emery.
Hey, we'll move on to Recreation Commission.
Still no, the new reports, we didn't have a meeting in, in August. Um. The next meeting was supposed to be. On the first, but that being a holiday, it'll be moved to the September eighth at six o'clock here at the Town Hall Chambers.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Okay, we'll move on to Saratoga Airport Advisory Board. Brenda?
Um, they think that their yearly planning meeting, city meeting, and public, um, AA and why not? Um, that was before the original meeting. And just discussing all the plans they have, that we, we didn't want to keep them the same one that you wanted them to sell. They did a lot of discussion about a, uh. Terminal out at the airport, so they're discussing that. And how to fund it. Um, they had discussion about the manager position. Decided to keep it, but it's. Uh, most of the landscaping is done. They just need to decide on a sign. Figure out, get better, figure out what to do for that. Um, the master plans. And the master plan has been just finishing the carryover, I guess. With that. In July, landing fees set a record of thirty two thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars. It's mostly never made cars. And there's also Larry's here, their Honda Racing is interested in doing some high altitude testing on the.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Yeah. Well, that's not me, you guys saying.
So about, uh, about a month, my name's Larry DiAndrea, and I, uh, I run the F B L, F B L manager. Um, about a month ago, Honda Racing Corporation, uh, gave us a call and said, we'd like to do some high altitude straight line testing. And being the gearhead that I am, I was like, this sounds like a pretty good opportunity. Um, what I think that they want to do is they're going to start, most of those races, uh, Indy races right now. Um, are occurring, uh, at low elevation, uh, tracks. Next year, they're talking about going to, uh, Mexico City. Which I think is like seventy three hundred feet. So, uh, they've never, never run their cars at an altitude that high. So, um, they, they want to do this, uh, they want to do this testing here. Let me just hand out this, uh. These handouts that I got from Honda. This is just kind of showing the, the airport and their proposed areas where they'd like to, uh. Where they'd like to test. It's really, uh. Jerry. Harry and I will be drivers, by the way. What they, what they'd like to do is I think they want to, uh, just logistically. They want to bring up three tractor trailers. I think they're going to have two cars and a bunch of equipment. Um. They'll stage that stuff on our main ramp. So, uh, right behind our new flagpoles, that part of the ramp is where, uh, where they'll stage all their equipment. Uh, they're proposing to do this, uh, September thirtieth through October second. So I think it's going to be a three day, uh, a three day event. Uh, so what they'll do is they'll, they'll leave from that ramp area. Um, if you're somewhat familiar with the airport, we'll go down Alpha One taxiway out to the two, three runway. And then do a straight line, high speed run on the runway. And then on connector six, they'll come back into Alpha Taxi Way, come back down. That probably won't be at speed because, um, because of the, uh. Uh, smoothness of the, uh, of the asphalt in that area. And then just come back, uh, come up Bravo and back to the ramp. So that's what they want to do. They've, it's not something new. They, they, they do this testing at airports in a lot of different areas, so they have. Their insurance is set up for this. They have contracts set up for it. So anything that we would ask for, that you thought that we would need to, uh. Uh, to do this safely, um, they, they've already done it. They've done it at the Kennedy Space Center. They test there also. Um. So anyway, I think if it's just an opportunity, they'll, they'll pay, there, it sounds like they're more than willing to pay for any expense that we have. In, in accommodating them. Um. So, you know, I don't know if they're going to need anything, maybe some security from, uh, our city police possibly, uh. Standing by with an engine, uh, a fire engine, something like that, but they're willing to pay for all of that. So, uh, as we get more information. Uh, about that, um, we'll, we'll let you guys know. Um, any questions that you can think of that you have for me now?
Will you guys take care of all the contract, contracting and everything?
Yep.
So that'll all be done through you.
That'll all be.
They have their insurance and.
Right, right. We'll make sure that the insurance is indemnification and, and everything is in order. Like I said, they've, they've done this in many locations, so I think there's nothing.
So would this be all day testing then?
I don't, probably not. Yeah, probably not.
Interfere with.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll address that. So the way we can, the way we would handle that is, um, first of all, they're, they understand they're on an airport and they have to be completely flexible. We're not closing. We're not closing our airport down to run this, this thing. Um, so what typically you would do is you would put out a NOTAM, which is a notice to airmen, and then I would also put a notice on our AWAS. So, uh, uh, anyone who's coming in, yeah, um, would have information about like, you know. Something, you know, this, this event is occurring between these hours and so forth and so on. Um, so we can handle it that way. We'll just be on the radio. Uh, the whole time, um, in case anyone came in and they missed everything else. Uh, so I think we can, we can take care of that and still make sure it's safe. Um, what'll, go ahead, Chuck.
And spectators, are you going to allow?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh. This is supposed to be somewhat, um, uh, somewhat, you know, a secret because, uh. All of those teams are testing and, and they don't really want people to know where they are, I think. But, um. I'm sure that like if kids wanted to come out or families wanted to come out and be in our, our, uh, our new parking area, that they could hang out there and see what was going on. I think it might be fun.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll keep you guys abreast of anything that comes up. Uh, it's kind of coming at us pretty fast, but like I said, the dates right now, I think are September thirtieth, right?
So Kyle, do you have a question?
Sounds like questions. I know that my person would love to see this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll drop by the airport or call us and then I can give you the information because I, I don't know what their schedule is going to be now. I just know, I just know that it's going to take place over three days. So.
You're really good. I like this.
And we're not asking you for any money, Chuck.
You probably like that.
I think we can make some money though.
We'll take some, you know, and make enough.
I don't know how they found us, you know, uh, I didn't ask them, but, uh, yeah, we got a good facility.
Great. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
You.
Yeah. Do you want us to formally make this into a motion to move forward?
I, I guess if that's proper protocol, why not?
You know, it probably is.
Okay.
I have a motion for. Go ahead and allow the airport to do this. Just be testing that guy?
Yeah, yeah. High altitude, high speed testing.
I'd make the motion to let Honda do their. High altitude, speed testing at the airport.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thanks, you guys.
I got a Honda four wheeler. Can I race it?
You can.
Okay.
Anything else, Brenda? The law. I didn't know if you had. Thanks. And before I move on to the next item. I want you to take this back to the board. Okay, and Larry, you can be aware of this too.
Yeah.
The board needs to come up with how. They want to choose an airport manager, whether it be the board approves this person to be airport manager, comes to the council, the council votes on it. That way, because there's nothing documented anywhere I can, anywhere I've looked, unless you've got other additional information. But I think it needs to come from the airport board. On how they want to come up with an, how they come up with their airport managers. There's only been three. By knowledge, it was Gary Welton, Kim Lorenz, and now Bob. And, but we need something so. It's, it's a form of a protocol. It'd be like a bylaw or something that you guys, how you choose your airport manager. Think it needs to be done by the board and then what we'll do is we'll look at it, uh, I'll have the attorney review it real quick. And we can just, you put that into effect. And probably would only do it. Whenever the board thought they needed. And probably would only do it whenever the board thought they needed to change or a new airport manager come on board. They wanted a new one. Anyway, if you guys would take that back to the board, and I'll try to be at the next board meeting too, so I can explain. This is, this is what I come up with after I talked to Kylie about all this stuff that, uh, was brought in, we had that little discussion in the airport board meeting.
Does anybody know how Bob became that?
Pardon?
How it switched from Kim to Bob?
Yeah, just, I think that when the FBO changed hands, that that was just part of it, because that, that was Kim's position. And now, you know, Kim was going to.
Yeah, and I, to me, I think it'd be something that the cop should vote on and then, then it's done and done. You know, in an open meeting and everything like that, and then it's set. Or, you know, at least take it back to him, we can discuss it more at the next airport meeting, okay? All right, uh, next we have on there is, uh, final payment to Wyoming Log and Timber and have an invoice outstanding in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, I talked to one of, uh, I guess there was two to three board, uh, board members that wa- went through and looked at everything that Blake had done at the airport. They're satisfied with it, I drove through, everything looks, from what I could tell off the quote sheets, everything looks fine and, uh, we need to vote on final payment.
There's not a final invoice in the packet?
No, it's not in there, it was the one that come in, uh, at the one meeting and we voted on it, no, then we held it.
So we have an invoice, it's.
We do have an invoice for the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Yeah.
And the airport board's good with everything? You're good with everything?
Yes, I've got a text message from Arlen and Iran was up there and so was Lance.
And he's done? Has he done?
Yes.
Good.
Yep.
The sign looks great, but.
Oh, yeah, everything turned out really neat. It did. So the chair to entertain a motion to go ahead and approve his final payment of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve the final payment.
Uh, they have a motion on the table, they approved the final payment of twenty-nine five seventy-seven. Wyoming Log and Timber, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, uh, next meeting is September eighth, uh, twenty twenty-five at three thirty PM here at the town hall. Uh, South Central Emergency Medical Service Board, their next meeting is September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM in Madison Bow, their minutes are included in this. Are there any new business to be brought before the town? I have a, I wish you to go into executive session. In accordance with Wyoming statute sixteen dash four, that's four oh five, little A, uh, two little I's and three little I's.
Now make, executive session?
Yes.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
The second.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Free to go, you're free to go, everybody's free to go but the clerk. You're free to go. Everybody's free to go but the clerk. You're free to go. Everybody's free to go but the clerk. You're free to go. Everybody's free to go but the clerk.